Regular scheduled council meeting to order, the clerk will do row.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to move to make a motion to amend the agenda.
I second.
Do you have a copy of the new agenda?
We do.
Can the clerk and city attorney and myself get it?
Yes, absolutely.
What is the motion?
To change the agenda.
I mean, how do you want to change?
We got a second on the floor.
Yeah, but nobody knows what the motion is.
It's a motion to amend the agenda.
In what way?
Well, we'll hand it out to you.
Do you want to tell the public what it is?
So it looks like everything is the same except we're adding a few things?
We have a second on the floor.
It was seconded by Ms. House, correct? You did second it, correct? Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes. And also, I moved to make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Since you brought this up, Judd, how come that we are required to have things to you guys in seven days prior, but the mayor's office nor the clerk's office gets the same respect to get this agenda with these changes prior to these meetings?
We plan to take care of that tonight.
It still doesn't answer the question to you guys have done this multiple times now and it, the public is made aware by us posting this publicly. You guys don't have to keep doing this secretly. If you're going to change what we set out, then just send it to the clerk and we can post it for the public to see as well. I think that's the same respect.
Mayor, I can speak for myself. I have called on several occasions and asked for things to be put on the agenda and it was discarded and never put on the agenda. And then, and then the city council agenda where it says city council agenda, that is never our agenda. That is an agenda that you and Bryson put out. That's not the city council agenda.
The office of the city clerk and the mayor's office has always produced the agenda. So council's saying tonight, so I want to be clear about this. From moving forward, you will not need the assistance of the mayor's office or the clerk's office in posting the agendas for your guys' meeting. Is that, is that correct?
We plan to address that in a later point, right here, right now, tonight. We will address this.
I say we just move forward.
Okay. So you've got your pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the other states, who worship the Lord, who worship God, and who believe in His wisdom.
This is not my agenda. I don't, because whoever's agenda this was, I wasn't ready for prayer.
I'll say the prayer. All right. Dear Lord, thank you so much for being here with us today. Just please continue to guide us and protect us. Just everything we do, let us please honor you and thank you for this wonderful life and thank you for this wonderful day. Amen.
So you have already approved and amended the agenda, so that's took care of. What about your pleasure on the September the 5th and October 10th meeting minutes for that?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
As corrected.
As corrected.
For September 10th.
For the September 5th meeting. Where if you pass those out.
Pardon?
Did you not, did you not know what to say?
She has.
We're having a public meeting.
Yeah.
And I appreciate you not interrupting. Thank you. Appreciate you. Go ahead.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Sir, I got them down there.
Can I ask who prepared the minutes?
Our attorney.
Who, which attorney is this?
Chris Weest.
Well, you don't, you don't change the minutes of a meeting. The minutes of a meeting reflect what occurred at the meeting. That's all they're supposed to do.
These were never changed with, these were never adopted.
These are handwritten.
These were never adopted.
I know, I know.
The only thing that was changed was some names were clarified.
Reflected what occurred at the meeting.
Mr. Bryson.
That's what they're supposed to do at the city.
Mr. Bryson.
Mr. Bryson, you need to take that up with our attorney. Take it up with our attorney.
I'm, I'm, I don't even know who your attorney is.
Yes, you do. Yes, you do.
No, I do not. Conrad, are you their attorney?
Yes, I'm the attorney until the expiration of my contract. My understanding was that Mr. Weest was also approved to be council's attorney.
Okay. Let's hold our peace, let the city attorney try to clarify these minutes, because this is important that we understand. You're bringing us handwritten minutes that your attorney who was not present, and I would like to also put this on the record tonight. This is a contract signed by Tracy Hanley with Chris Weest. Let it reflect that in the contract, it says, "In the event that the court restore former mayor Randall Whittle to office, the representation of the city as an entity shall automatically terminate the 14 calendar days after the action until or unless the action is reversed." He expired out October the 12th. So what contract are you operating under currently, since we like to do things legal here? So you have brought me minutes from an attorney that your contract clearly has expired.
No, we are not. We have a resolution here where we are clarifying that Mr. Weest was approved effective August 4th, 2025. Yes.
But you understand that state statute, Ms. House, requires the mayor of the city, not council, to sign a contract. Your contract through Tracy Hanley expired 14 days after I returned to office.
We're not discussing that. We're not discussing that. We have a resolution.
So my question is, how does my office pay your attorney when there's no contract? So you've got resolutions, minutes, and all this stuff at the taxpayer's cost, and his letter also goes on to say that he told council, as I explained, our firm is located more than two hours from the London, Kentucky, and it behooves the city to find someone local or at least someone that's closer office for that road. So it's, it is frustrating to us that you guys, once again, come in here not trying to work together, not trying to move this city forward. You bring us documents none of us have seen, the public has not seen, the media has not been given any of this, and then working and operating on a contract that is non-existent.
Mr. Chairman, is what we've done tonight, is it illegal or is it legal to change the agenda, for the council to change the agenda? Is that an illegal thing?
Conrad, I asked you, they have a contract that is non-invoid with an attorney that they have witnessed, we've all witnessed and they've admitted tonight. He, he's the one that did all the documentations here tonight. So how does he legally do that on behalf of the city of London if he does not have a valid contract?
Well, I don't, I don't have a copy of that contract, first and foremost. Why would I have that? And secondly, my understanding was that that contract, and I, I don't know, but just what you said was the city of London, right?
The entity of city of London.
So he was the city attorney under this contract.
No, he was not, because the front of this also says that he is not acting as the city attorney at all, and nor was he appointed to that office.
Mr. Whittle, did, did you not hire attorneys in Louisville yourself?
My own money.
No, what about Mr. Strauss? No, no, no. What about Mr. Strauss? Mr. Whittle, can you answer my question about Mr. Strauss?
Yeah, that wasn't on my behalf. That was on the city's behalf, because your attorney, your attorney, Christie Shannon sued the city.
That has nothing to do with what I'm asking.
That is everything to do with it.
And you, you hired sir, Mr. Strauss.
So she had, he had to defend the fire department because this council likes to put a price tag on the lives of the people in London.
Excuse me?
So the Christie, Christie Shannon sued the city, so the city had to obtain an attorney to fight that, that suit.
What did, what was the, what were they sued for, Mr. Whittle?
The CON.
Okay, what's that for?
That's for the fire department to go out here and save lives.
No, no, actually what it is, see, we know nothing about it as your council. We, we know nothing about it. You've not informed us.
Well, Judd, in all fairness.
Let me, let me finish speaking. Thank you.
You was appointed.
Can I finish speaking?
After the fact.
It doesn't matter. The council before me and currently has no idea of your intentions, what you've done with the fire department to create. Excuse me, I'm speaking. Therefore, Mr. Whittle, you hired, you got sued because everyone was in the dark but your fire department and you. You were building an ambulance service, we all know that, but we had no, we had no information on that, and it created a legal issue, which yes, you hired an attorney out of Louisville, Mr. Strauss, who's awes, who has cost you how much so far? Fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars? That's what you should be upset about.
If the public flees, from the public flees. From the public flees.
Can I, can I please say something?
I need everybody to hold, hold their tongue for a minute and let this be worked out because.
We are ridiculed and chastised every day for attorney fees. Our attorney fees are small compared to what they have spent.
We're off topic.
Compared to what Larry Bryson charges per month. To date, I'll give you an example. For out of Larry Bryson's office this year, if you all want to be upset, be upset about this, be upset about this. Out of Larry Bryson's office, this year to date, a hun, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars has been paid to Larry Bryson in his office, year to date for this year, a hundred and eighty-eight.
So just, we need, we need everybody to keep decorum, Judd, and listen, you're, what you're debating here is, it's not an issue. The, you keep saying, every action that my office has taken is to save lives in the city of London. Randall Whittle's not benefiting from it.
You can spend this however you want, but you have spent a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars of taxpayer money through Larry Bryson's office. Now explain it. And who was Mr. Strauss?
You have a detailed invoice from Larry Bryson.
You wanted to talk about us hiring attorneys outside of the city of London, and you've done the same thing. And you've not only done that, but you've spent, what, three or four times the amount of money that we have. But yet, we're the bad guys, so.
All right, guys, let's just get back on topic, please.
It's, it's, still the fact remains, Judd. You can throw a hissy fit like a little five-year-old kid.
I'm calm and collected.
You lost the election and we're here tonight.
It's not about the election. I'm not upset that I lost the election. I'm not upset.
What I'm trying to question, once again, in a council meeting, is the legality of something that you're doing. Because you guys, for eight months, have, now we're going into 10 months, disregarded law and continued about your own way. So I bring up tonight your, the contract with your.
Spinning houses, sir.
It's your contract. Tracy Hanley signed it.
Sir, you're spinning this every way against the council, and that's, and you talk about.
You have no contract and then you bring, you know how bad it makes us look, Judd, that you guys have not notified my office? And then you come in here with your private agendas and say.
Did you notify us, sir, when you hired Strauss and you created a.
Yes, we talked to council members.
I have never heard you once say.
Well, Judd, again, you were appointed and then it started impeaching me, so I didn't have time to talk to you.
That is a lie.
Other than impeachment here.
That is a lie.
But listen, let's stick to the facts. I'm trying to find out even from your attorney, the legality of this contract.
And you've spent money that we have no idea about, but we are digging it up. I promise you that.
Dig all you want to, Judd. The CON is to save lives.
We are, if that's the way you want to spin it, go ahead.
Gentlemen, please.
Can we see the agenda? The, can the public see the agenda?
I'm not sure. Are we, what item are we on now?
So are we gonna, what's the motion to approve the minutes? Who's making a motion?
What are you?
I'm a citizen. Now, once they hear from you all, that has emailed you all multiple times and we can't get answers. How much does the city owe Chris Weest for September 5th? I emailed you all. We haven't got an answer.
Are, are you ready? Oh, no, you want, hey, let me, let, can I, can I explain something, man? Pardon me, Chase, I'm speaking.
No, don't cut him off. You're trying to knock people off.
Can I, can I speak and answer your question?
That's all you do.
Everybody, please, please, please.
I will know that, Chase. Thanks for your.
If we can get back to the agenda, please.
Are we going to approve the minutes from September the 5th and October the 10th? Need a motion to approve.
Everybody, please.
How do we even prove this?
My, my suggestion with the minutes.
How much what?
Is we got these prepared.
Fifteen thousand compared to a hundred and eighty-eight thousand?
Everybody, please, please.
Let's hold decorum, guys. I understand everybody's upset.
Judd, I'm trying to propose something about the minutes.
Can we please move forward?
That's what I'm trying to do.
Okay. Mr. Bryson, Mr. Bryson, you, you, this is not your meeting, Mr. Bryson.
No, sir.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you like, I'm gonna say like this.
He is the city attorney.
If you have a question, if you or you have a question, contact Chris Wee, Chris Weest, and he can help you. He doesn't have to be here. City attorneys and council attorneys do not have to be here every meeting, Donny Hale. They do not have to be, and.
But that means you don't know what you're doing.
Is there a motion on the floor?
No, we can't get it. We don't even know. We don't even know these minutes.
Everybody, please, please.
Let, let's hold decorum.
Somebody's got, got to keep decorum here.
Everybody.
Can we take a pause in this meeting?
Let's hold decorum.
Can we take a pause and reset this meeting, please?
Let, let's hold decorum.
No recess. There's an ordinance that I would like to get read. We have city residents trying to get business done.
Yes.
This is very important to me.
So we're, we're just questioning the minutes you've brought us. We've, first time we've seen it, this agenda. So you see the concern, anybody with rational thought would. Then you hand us minutes, so we're questioning. Because the city doesn't operate this way. We're way classier than this. It's handwritten, and who wrote it? Who, who did the handwriting? And then we've not seen this, and you know who's responsible, council? Let me say this. Who's responsible for these minutes once you, you sit here and approve these? She is. She's the one that takes the minutes in every meeting. She's the keeper of all the records in the city. Now you're asking us to prove something and then just store it away in the vault like, we don't know what this is. You have to explain yourselves.
There are actually notes that are written on her minutes, clarifying names of people.
Mayor, if they want to approve the minutes, just let them approve the minutes. I mean, it's, it's their minutes.
Yeah, but, so let me, and let me say this, but you guys, they have been told countless times that you cannot legally just wipe away what happens in a council meeting.
It's not, it's not wiped away.
It's not wiped away either.
Those are additions on her notes that we were provided.
So why didn't, when we sent emails out asking you guys what was wanting to be added, we, we tried to work with you guys on this. She emailed you, then I emailed you, saying, "What is it that you're requesting to change?" And it was complete silence.
I never got that email.
Mr. Chairman, you were asked, and it was even put on social media, some of the content of the agenda, and, and we apparently never got an answer. So when you say that we're working together, that's far from the truth. We would love to work together, but it's merely impossible, sir. So I'm ready to move on with this, however we need to.
So is somebody going to make a motion to approve the minutes? The second? They're approving what they gave you.
We do have a motion, I believe, on the floor.
Who, who made it?
I did.
And then second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Ortega?
No.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
We still have to approve the minutes on October 10th.
Want y'all to know that my advice to the city clerk will be to put both her minutes and these in the minute book. It's my decision, the city attorney. She's the keeper of the records.
So the October 10th minutes, need a motion to approve?
Were those amended? Because it's still, I didn't get a copy of this. No?
I guess you'll use the copy we gave you guys?
I believe that's, I believe so, yes.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we accept the October 10th meeting minutes.
Second.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
I've never seen anything public.
Before we go into.
I didn't get the email. I didn't get the email. I suggest the council and the mayor's office hire a personal courier to deliver.
I'm trying to get to you guys.
What's going on with the meetings because evidently people, by all means, that, that don't get an email.
Well, it's a, your department head reports are in your packet that we had gave you. You guys will find that there.
On the department head update, would this be a good time for Randy to come up and talk about the bid for the leaf blower?
We can, but that's also on the agenda too, to address an E. Next thing on the agenda is approval resolution 2025. I'm assuming dash 10. It's not on the agenda.
Clerk has to sign the complete resolution number.
It should be the manufactured homes. No, it's meetings procedures.
This is a, this is a brand-new resolution.
Yeah.
Brand-new, I don't have it. And I can't sign a number right now because I don't know what number I'm on. And I don't want to put a wrong number.
Now, this is new. Who prepared this?
So this is to repeal the municipal order 2025 dash zero one.
So this is repealing resolution.
No, that was a municipal order.
No, it's suppealing municipal order.
This resolution is repealing municipal order 2025 dash zero one.
Anybody know what's different in it?
It looks like it's consolidated, which is good. That municipal order 2025 dash zero one is pretty, is pretty lengthy, correct?
I'm sorry, say that again? The resolution that was just passed out repeals the municipal order 2025 dash zero one, which was about 12 pages, 14 pages?
Yes, 14.
14 pages. This looks like it consolidates that.
Who prepared this?
I just, just now.
Anybody know who prepared?
Donna, you passed it out. Who'd you get it from?
What, what is your question?
Who prepared the document?
Chris Weest.
Chris Weest did?
Yes.
That's all he was asking. That's all he was asking. So, normally, when we make changes to items, we cross out and then we underline the changes, so.
Well, actually, we don't have to do that, because that was a municipal order, municipal resolution.
When, when was the discussion? When did that take place?
That's attorney-client information, you can call Mr. Weest.
No, it's a violation of the open meeting law, if it didn't-
Notice, no, it's not. Attorney-client is protected, so.
I know a little more about that than you know.
Well, I don't know if you've been to a CLE in a while, but you know that attorney-client conversations are protected, so take it up with Mr. Weest.
Are you saying that the city citizens need to give an attorney, so we know what's going on?
I'm saying that attorney-client conversations and exchanges and communications are protected by case history and law.
But how can you use the attorney's money for that if it's, if it's protected?
Do you guys want to have this read before any motions?
So, what's the motion on this resolution?
Give me one second, Mayor. Do you guys want to have this read out loud before any motions are made?
Yeah, she's supposed to, yeah.
I'm supposed to read it?
Read a resolution.
You all prepared it, you can read it. Because I would not get it before, that's extremely rude.
Ashley, as the clerk, you're, you're supposed to read it.
I understand that, but it's extremely rude, and I've said this before.
How's it rude, Ashley?
She said, "We..."
I mean, you're, you're, you're smart, you can read very well, I know you can.
I know that I can. It's just aggravating. No, I don't care, it's a fine bill. I just don't understand.
I'm not degrading her at all.
Okay. I'm going to read this, please. Whereas the City Council of the City of London wishes to establish procedures for regular called meetings to assist with order and ensure there is opportunity for public participation. And whereas the City Council also wishes to ensure that there is opportunity for all its members to participate in the formulation of the agenda, now therefore it is resolved that the following procedures are adopted for regular meetings. The following procedures are adopted for regular meetings and shall be effective for the December regular called meeting and meetings thereafter. Special meetings in accordance with law are limited to agenda items announced in advance, agenda preparation. If the mayor wishes to have an item added to the agenda, he may do so by communicating by email, personally or otherwise to the city clerk and members of the city council the item or items that the mayor wishes to have added to the agenda, no later than noon on Wednesday preceding the regular called meeting. Any member of the council wishing to add an item to the agenda shall be permitted to do so by communicating by email, personally or otherwise to the city clerk and the remaining members of the city council the item or items that member wishes to have added to the agenda, no later than noon on Friday preceding the regular called meeting. In the event that the mayor or members of council cannot meet the deadlines herein, including the reasons that an item was not anticipated but is necessary, he or she may request the city council amend the agenda to include that item at the time that consideration for the agenda is undertaken at the meeting. All items for consideration, whether it be a resolution, municipal order, ordinance, or a vote, or discussion in any matter, shall be provided in writing form to members of the city council by email, personally or otherwise, no later than an hour prior to the commencement of the regularly called meeting, or in the alternative, bringing hard copies to the meeting. Nothing in this section shall prevent the city council at the meeting from freely amending the agenda to add or remove any items or from taking such action on an item that it deems appropriate, including tabling that item for additional consideration. The agenda shall only consist of bus, city business, the default agenda shall be as follows: Call to order, roll call, pledge of allegiance, opening prayer, approval of or amendment of the agenda, approval or amendment of minutes from past meetings, department head reports, police fire, public works, building inspector, rescue squad. A, a headcount, full-time, part-time, temporary. B, salary expenses to include regular and overtime year-to-date actual versus budget. C, all expenditures including but not limited to maintenance, vehicle and property, fuel, training, supplies of vehicles, equipment, legal fees, public relations, and to show year-to-date actual versus budget. Number eight is new business, nine is old business, ten, public comment period, and then eleven's adjourned. Minutes to be approved shall be prepared, no later, this is not later than on Wednesday preceding the regularly called meeting and the draft minutes sent to city council at that time. The city council encourages public participation at its meetings to assure order and persons wishing to address the city council shall sign in, an assign-in sheet that contains a person's names, address, and topics they wish to speak on. Topics must be related to the City of London or the business thereof. The mayor or presiding officer shall remind the public the sign-in requirement at least two minutes prior to calling the meeting in order. Immediately prior to the starting of the meeting, the sign-in sheet to speak shall be collected by the city clerk and delivered to the mayor or presiding officer. After the conclusion of the meeting, the mayor or presiding officer shall deliver the sign-in sheet to the city clerk for record retention. In order to ensure that it is equal opportunity for everyone wishing to speak to do so and to ensure that it is appropriate order, any person wishing to speak and who has signed in shall be limited to at least two, to a total of two minutes, which time limits shall be strictly enforced. It is, if that person signs in to address more than one topic, their total time shall be limited to two minutes.
Motion to approve resolution?
There's, yeah.
Oh, is there?
The mayor, presiding officer shall call the speakers to speak in the order that they signed in, however, if someone's speaking, or sorry, if someone signed in to speak to a particular topic that is on the agenda, they shall be permitted to and called to speak on that item prior to discussion or consideration of that item, decorum. Members of the public shall, who shout, yell, speak, when not called upon or interrupt other speakers are breaches of decorum in order. Upon a first violation of any meeting, the violator shall be informed that he or she has violated decorum rules and warned to cease the behavior, warned to cease the behavior. Upon a second violation at any meeting, the violator shall be informed that he or she has violated decorum rule and again be warned to cease the behavior and told that he or she will be rejected if it occurs again. The mayor or presiding officers shall upon a third violation inform the violator that he or she has violated decorum rules and object to that person from the meeting. This municipal order 2025 oh one is repealed upon adoption of this resolution.
So, counsel, we, we want to bring, the city would like to bring to your attention that in section eight, it says the city council shall sign into sign-in sheets that contains the person's name and address and topics they wish to speak. You legally cannot require them to give an address. So, we're already starting out with your own Gestapo agenda here, but we need to address this, that if you pass this, you're already in violation of the KRS. You, you cannot require an address.
Do you know what that KRS is? Because when I speak in Frankfurt, I have to give an address.
That's a notice I agree on. We've not been given our address.
I'm not, I'm not speaking to you all, I'm asking the import something.
They're not requiring you to speak, it's a violation of the open meeting law.
No, it's not.
But, darling, you know-
You cannot require someone to sign in to attend a meeting, but you can require them to sign in and give an address to speak at a meeting.
Correct, and the city agrees with you on that, but you're saying they have to give an address, and that's the part-
No, it's not, sorry.
Well, give us your address, I'll, show us.
I think you already know where it is.
So, counsel, what's your motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. I second.
It ends in legal resolution.
I disagree, and so does our attorney.
I will, I will on record.
You can talk to our attorney. Motion is on the floor. I made the motion, please.
Other parts of it, I'll leave the first amendment right.
Point of order, please.
What's the point of order, Judd?
There's a motion on the floor.
He just did a point of order.
Yes, and there's a second on the floor. I'm trying to get this fast, sir. See, I'm trying to do, see, business.
Do your roll call.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Are you gonna have Mike Smith come and the Mrs. McCray and everybody?
Next, next thing on the agenda is retention of legal counsel, your approval resolution 2025, we don't have resolution number. We're letting her get called up here.
Whereas the city council previously on August 4th, 2025, approved and hired Chris Weest, attorney-at-law, P L L C, and Mayor Waddle has disputed the scope of that retention and representation, it is resolved that the city council clarifies that representation, as was previously proved, effective August 4th, 2025. That engagement, that engagement agreement with Chris Weest, attorney-at-law, P L L C, attached hereto, is hereby approved. Members of the city council authorizing same may sign that agreement.
I make a motion, we approve the resolution.
I second.
So, this is the same resolution that we passed when Tracy was here, correct? Now, we're having to pass it since-
No, no, Tracy was in office in September, this was approved office of four.
There was no resolution. Judd made a motion when TJ Roberts was here to hire Weest Law Firm, and it was seconded and it did go through, and we never disputed that them actions have, the minutes even reflect that, so we wanted to clarify. The chair wants to, what we're questioning is, is after that, you guys did a contract with Chris Weest, and it was signed by Tracy Hanley. In his contract, that you guys agreed to apparently at some point, I don't know if that was done in an open meeting, or the mayor did, which she had full powers to do that, but it specifically says that it shall automatically terminate fourteen calendar days after the action of me returning to office. So, I, I don't even know what this resolution does, I mean, we all know what you did August the 4th when TJ Roberts was here. What we're trying to get clarification for is your contract terminated fourteen days after I come in, which would have been October the 12th.
This is something, again, and I, I, I want to cut through this, please, just take that up with the air attorney, Chris Weest, and let's move on, okay? Because everything that Chris has prepared, I firmly feel confident is legal.
So, you need a motion to approve this resolution that basically says you did hire Chris Weest on August the 4th? I just want to clarify that to the public.
And I think I made the motion.
Okay, second?
I second.
Mr. Ortega?
And this is the same, this is the same agreement, so yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Well, with that being said, Christie Shannon was supposed to expire too, now she expired, and also-
Wait, if you, wait, we got her on here. What is this? Well, we're, we're going down the list, okay? Thank you.
He's, he's being paid two hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
You can discuss that with him.
Well, it's-
No, that's, that's-
Mr. Bryson, you know, from somebody who, who has billed our city almost a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, I wouldn't say much if I were you.
Yeah, really.
No, I, I can't. Let's move forward, please. He's not air attorney, he's, he's the city attorney. This is air attorney.
Does this have a resolution or no?
I don't see, this is an engagement, agreement.
Okay.
Wow.
So, let's keep decorum, and we need clarification, so we have two engagement letters, the chair
does here. Who would like to clarify what these letters are, are doing here? Donna Gill, since you passed them out, do you want to clarify?
Christie Shannon is the local attorney who does some of the clerical work for us, and she does processing of all the information that you've got from City Hall. This is a common practice with attorneys all over the state of Kentucky, that they have one attorney that is lead attorney, and then they consult or have other attorneys from different firms.
So, after, so, let's hold decorum, please, so we can make sure we have all the facts on record here tonight.
It's no different than what Larry has done, like I said earlier.
You know, Judd, you keep saying that, but why don't, why don't we, why don't we disclose the amount of work that Mr. Bryson has done, not only-
You want to do that, really?
Yeah, yeah, his, his lawyers are, he is very detailed on his billing.
You can justify a hundred and ninety thousand dollars?
I can justify one hundred percent.
Really? Let me ask you this.
But I can't justify a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand trying to impeach a man. I can't do that. But the chair is looking for the record to be clarified by counsel that this engagement letter, after signing tonight, so the public and the chair is clear, the council is hiring Shannon Law Firm and Chris Weest to handle, it looks like ordinances, both of them's going to basically have the same thing, is that correct?
They hand off work to different ones. Mr. Weest does certain things, and Ms. Shannon does other.
So, Shannon Weest and Chris, or Chris Weest and Shannon Law Firm, Christie Shannon is replacing Conrad Cessna.
Conrad, as you know, notified us several days ago that-
And it expires in this month, we're aware of that.
Okay, so, we have to have an attorney, because the city attorney is not, not on bias.
So, don't be sitting here making blanket statements you know nothing about.
I know he's not biased.
There, there's no sense in personal attacks.
So, Judd, what do you, what do you make?
So, 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 again-
So, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman?
Is there a motion for Shannon Law Firm?
I make a motion to accept the resolution.
Do you know that he hires an attorney every time we do something special?
I second.
No, Bryson, Bryson hires annexation attorney, a special attorney for everything.
There is a motion on the floor. Second?
Yes, I got a second.
Do the roll call.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
So, then we have, I need a motion for Chris Weest.
That was done already.
Yeah, we already did that.
This engagement letter?
Yeah, that was on here, 2025, they agreed.
Wow, okay. This was for the previous, it wasn't, this resolution wasn't pertaining to this engagement It was, they're, they're two separate items, I don't want to get lost in this. So, they did a resolution basically saying that they hired him on August the 4th. Now, this is trying to say that they're hiring him back to be, this is the engagement letter. Okay, well, they feel satisfied with it.
And, and it appears the only two differences between the Shannon engagement letter and the Weest engagement letter is that Weest will handle the appeals related to Mayor Waddle and any litigation authorized by you all. Otherwise, they're identical, except for the amount that's being paid.
Do you have the resolution for the Tourism Commission?
Yes.
Hold decorum, thank you.
So, whereas the London City Ordinance 2014-04, which reestablishes the restaurant tax in London, Kentucky, stated paragraph eight, that the city council forbids the Tourism Commission from issuing revenue bonds or borrowing money beyond the fiscal year without the express approval of the City of London council members, and, whereas Kentucky law likewise prohibits such a note and mortgage of city property without the approval of city council, including KRS 91A point three nine zero seven and eight, and the Tourism Commission and mayor signed a long-term thirty-year note and mortgage and other associated documents, including an assessment of rent, of rents and other proceeds collectively, the note and mortgage with Cumberland Valley Bank, all without the approval of the City of London council members, and in convenience of Kentucky law and the express restriction of the, in London, Kentucky Ordinance 2014 dash zero four and KRS 91A point three nine zero seven and eight in July 2025. Now, therefore, it is resolved that the city council disapproves the forced note and mortgage that the city council authorizes Chris Weest, attorney-at-law, P L L C, and or local council, Chrissy Shannon, to institute and prosecute to the conclusion, including any appeals and action for declaratory and injunctive relief and or under KRS 91A point three nine four related to the note and mortgage to invalidate and or enjoin the same against appropriate parties and to seek any or other relief related to the same that is appropriate.
The chair would also like to put on the record that in 2022, the city was audited by the state auditors. One of the things that we was dinged on in this city that they found wrong is that this- One of the things that we was dinged on in this city that they found wrong is that the city was trying to interject itself into the tourism business. Matter of fact, most someone at the table was blasting the previous mayor because of these actions. And once again, counsel is trying to, this is an SPGE, I think it would be really good if we consulted attorneys that knew municipal law and SPGE laws, because I do not feel like that you have the authority to step into the SPGE arena when they are separate from the city. That's what some of you on this council fought for, and you're sitting here present today saying, no, wait a minute, we have the rule over them, they don't have the rule over themselves. But the auditor disagreed with you in 2022 as well. So you're going to do what you want here today, but I think you better get some better advice.
I make a motion to accept the resolution.
For a second, do we know how much of the loan money has been used so far?
Just second on the floor.
Do you roll call?
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Who has the, so we got to go back to our packet? So in our original packet, you guys had, we took bids, and there's only one bid that come in, it was sealed. The Public Works Director and the clerk opened it up out of the one bid we received for the new leaf blower. As we had stated to you guys in an email, it's either replace the vacuum, not blower, I'm sorry, or we have to pass an ordinance requiring residents of city to bag the leaves so we could remove them for them. But for a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, we can purchase this one that's in the bid that you have today.
Mayor, or you've only received, or we've only received one bid, are there others that did not respond? I guess that goes to Phil, that didn't respond to the-
We went through the procurement stuff with that, we advertised it, ran the paper, this is the only people that responded. We thanked Scott and actually reached out to some other equipment people that were in the past and gave them a notice that this is the one.
But there are other manufacturers? Only one you got a bid back on. Have we purchased this yet?
Randy, how old is our current? Twenty-two years old?
What finally give out on it that's non-replaceable?
Since I've been here, they've made numerous modifications on the kind of, I guess, withstand the life of it.
Is it, is it a fan, or blower, or a motor, or?
It's off, everything's pretty much facing, it's been worn while with some engine components and we can't get parts.
Does it get used for anything other than leaves?
No.
And we're in peak leaf season, right?
I'm sorry?
We're right in the middle of peak leaf season, we're coming into it.
Phil, is this a quote, is it within your all's budget right now?
It, we didn't anticipate purchasing this, but it is within our budget. We do have the money.
We do have the money.
Yes.
My only concern is they do have the funds for this. My only concern after speaking to Randy, when the, when the vacuum was here for demonstration last month, a few weeks ago, is that they're going to need a new trash collector as well. Is that correct? A new trash collector, a truck?
That means separate budget, this is all.
That's separate budget, okay.
The clutch is the biggest thing that's out on it. It's old, worn out, the blade, but the biggest thing is trying to find a clutch and pressure plate for it, because when the mechanic called around to other places everywhere trying to find it, they looked at it and said, you know, that's obsolete.
I mean, for- Randy, you want to take the mic?
Randy, step up to the mic and repeat that.
Phil, is that 2002, you said?
2003.
Just repeat what exactly was wrong with the, you said the clutch went out?
The clutch and the pressure pipe went out almost last year after we got through, well, we didn't hardly get through leaf season when it went out. And the mechanic, he shopped around everywhere he sources parts, and they just told us it's obsolete.
Is this unit bigger than the one that-
Just, just a little bit. This is a seventeen cubic yard that you pull behind the vehicle.
She makes a lot of noise?
Not, well, it's a vacuum.
The reason I ask, I got a grandson that loved watching the old one, okay?
Yeah, she, it's, it's, it's well-built, you know, it'll make some noise.
Okay, all right.
And we're talking about, I mean, if it can last us another two decades, that'd be nice. I mean, that's about fifty-five hundred dollars a year, if it can last us twenty-two years, so.
It ought to, it's heavy build. The reason they reached out, this salesman comes by, he reached out, I reached out to him, actually. Larry from Municipal, we tried several places. Municipal, where we get a lot of equipment, they don't even, don't even have one. This one is a demo model, and they said they would sell it to us, but they can't even sell it to us if we approve us to buy it till sometime up in December.
Wow.
Because it's still on the demo circuit, making the rounds.
This is the one that you feel comfortable with, and you as well, sir?
Yeah, this one also, it's not as light or as large as we, guys running the homes, it's a little more arm and assist. Especially when we do this, all the residents that love the leaves and that's the road, it's a lot more convenient.
Is the unit still available?
As of right, as of right now, it's out on the demo circuit. No, they couldn't even sell it to us if we could try to buy it that day.
And the total cost was a hundred and twenty-two.
Hundred and twenty-two, eighty-one sixty-five.
I want to make a-
I'm sorry, go ahead. I'll second.
First of all, I would say, yeah, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and allow them to purchase. I know that a lot of people get use out of it, that when you think about our elderly community, that can't get out and bag the leaves and stuff, I think it's very important to-
Well, if you spend any time, like Greenway, we're in Greenway subdivision there, probably two times a week because it's just trees.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve the bid, the purchase of the bid?
I'll second. Thank you, Randy.
Roll call?
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Next thing on the new agenda is first reading of Ordinance Number 2025-12, which is the City Ethics Ordinance.
I do have, I do have a few things to say. Mayor, I did reach out to the ad, to the director there, Whitney, and we had a good conversation. There is, I believe, eighteen, eighteen counties in the ad?
Mm-hmm.
Eight.
Is it eight counties with seventeen cities? I believe something like that. And they do have an ethics board. Not every, not every city is involved, and I, we had a good conversation. I like our current ethics ordinance. I believe it is legal. I was looking at the KLC example in the KLC book, and it's, it's almost word for word. So even though we had a good conversation, I'm in favor of keeping our current ordinance 2023-10. Now, what was just passed out was a, a new one.
So what is this? Can you clarify? You're amending 2023-10?
There's only one change. It's on the second page, subsection K.
Yeah, but she, it says plainly here, Ordinance Amending the City's Ethics Ordinance 2023-10 and 2025.
So it's, it's the same ordinance?
Well, this ain't the same, because you're missing a lot of pages here.
The only thing I want to say is, I served on the Cumberland Valley Ad Board for twelve years, over twelve years, okay? I know the workings there. I have a lot of friends still there, okay? The ethics board that the Cumberland Valley Ad Board has out there has not been active for over nine years. Most of the members of that board passed away, and their attorney passed away, and they haven't replaced those people. So it's going to take months to even get one, and their function is not a disciplinary type thing. It is just to see if communities and towns and cities that get this funding for special projects, if they meet the items that are in the contract or in the law that requires them to get this money. It's not set up to be a disciplinary type ethics board.
Well, I would like to object to that, because the City of Barville is actually in that program, and they removed the mayor of Barville from that ethics board.
Then he must have violated something in a contract or something.
No, he violated the ethics ordinance that you, there's no, no argument. I just don't want any misrepresentation. And Cumberland Valley Ad would clarify this. They use the ordinances you pass, and whatever that ordinance is, that's what they use to enforce. So-
We've already got two, because we approved the minutes from September the fifteenth. There were three, there were three people, he brought the minutes forth for approval when he was reinstated. So we had three people that we approved.
Can the Chair get clarification? We have an ethics ordinance currently, and generally, when we do changes to ordinances, all the information is brought into one ordinance. We make the changes, they're highlighted, they're strict with a line through them, or the added to is what you have done here, you know, you have it underlined. But we're missing a lot of the pages. So just for clarification, is 2025-12 repealing 2023-10?
This is just an amendment. It says at the top, it's an amendment. And what it is, is we have two appointed and approved ethics board members, and instead of having three as a quorum, we want to go with the two that we already have to finish filling the positions on the ethics board. That's the only change.
The way an ordinance is amended, and you can read the statute, it's plain, is you strike through the old language and underline the new language. This does not do that with the other ordinance. This begins with section five.
I'm making a request for the clerk to read the ordinance, please.
Donna, we're just simply trying to make sure that you guys are doing this correctly. Every ordinance we've ever amended-
And again, if there's any questions, please take it up with our attorney. That's all we're asking. We're going in circles.
Let's, let's hold decorum.
I think that, I think the two that are supposed to be on there at this time, if I'm correct, is Jane Winkler-Dyke and Mandy Bargo.
That is incorrect.
Derek House was also appointed, but he resigned the next day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It looks like in section one, that they're just amending this section.
Yeah, and I understand that, but generally, you have the entire ordinance, and the amend changes are just what we highlighted. That's generally how it's done, so, yeah.
Take that for attorney.
So-
You know, if we had known this was coming up, I could have spoken with your attorney.
If we had known that you would be non-biased, we could have worked with you.
I'm talking about this.
I'm talking about your bias.
I'm unbiased. I've heard from you and Judge, you know, Judge was the one that made the open record.
Let's not get personal.
For my attorney bill. And instead of putting it on Facebook.
Point of order, please. Point of order, please. Let's hold, let's hold decorum.
Point of order. Can you read the ordinance, please?
Whereas, the City of London has authority under KRS 65.003 to establish a code of ethics and to provide other provisions related thereto. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the City of London, Kentucky as follows. Section five of Ordinance 2023-10 is amended to read as following. The Board of Ethics was previously created by the City Ordinance. The Board of Ethics shall have the authority, duties, and responsibilities as set forth in this ordinance to enforce provisions of this ordinance and fulfill other obligations as stated in Kentucky statutes. The Board of Ethics shall consist of five members who shall be appointed by the mayor, subject to the approval of City Council, or as provided in D of this ordinance. Not more than three members shall be elected or appointed officers, whether paid or unpaid. No member of the Board of Ethics shall be a city officer or a city employee of the city, or any city, board, commission, or agency. The member shall serve for a term of three years or until their successors are legally appointed, whichever is later. Each member of the Board of Ethics shall have been a resident of City London for at least one year prior to the date of the appointment, and shall reside in the city throughout the term of office. The members of the Board of Ethics shall be chosen by virtue of their known and consistent reputation for integrity and their knowledge of local government affairs. The members may be reappointed for any number of consecutive terms. A member of the Board of Ethics may be removed by the mayor for misconduct, inability, willful neglect, or duties, or violation of this ordinance, or upon recommendation by a majority vote of the Board of Ethics, reported by a written response for such recommendations, subject to the approval of City Council. Vacancies on the Board of Ethics shall be filed within sixty days by the mayor, subject to approval by the City Council. If the vacancy is not filled by the mayor with approval of the City Council within sixty days, the remaining member of the Board of Ethics shall fill the vacancy. All vacancies shall be filled for the remainder of the unexpired term. Members of the Board of Ethics shall serve without compensation unless otherwise approved by the City Council, but shall be reimbursed for all unnecessary and reasonable expenses incurred in the performance of their duties. Subject to approval of the mayor and the ability of funding of the City Council, the Board of Ethics may be provided legal counsel, and the city shall be responsible for such attorney fees. The city shall provide a policy and liability insurance for the members of the Board of Ethics and the faithful performance of their duties and responsibilities pursuant to their ordinance. The Board of Ethics shall annually elect a chairperson from among the membership. The chairperson shall be presiding officer and a full-voting member of the board. The chairperson shall conduct all meetings of the Board of Ethics and maintain order at such meetings. The chairperson may obtain city police presence at any meeting deemed necessary by the chair. Other than the chairperson, no member of the board shall have any authority to act on behalf of the board unless authorized by the board. Meeting of the Board of Ethics shall be held as necessary upon the call of the person, chairperson, or at the written request of the majority of the members of the board, or at the request of the mayor or majority vote of the City Council. A quorum shall consist of the majority of the members who have been appointed to the Board of Ethics. Any member of the Board of Ethics who has conflict or interest with respect to any matter to be considered by the board shall disclose the nature of the conflict, shall disqualify himself or herself from voting on the matter, and shall not be counted for purpose of establishing a quorum, and shall remove themselves from such portion of the meeting until such discussion of this matter is completed. Minutes shall be kept for all proceedings of the meeting of the Board of Ethics, and the vote of each member on any issue decided by the board shall be recorded in the minutes. This ordinance shall be effective immediately upon publication. Further, any ordinances in conflict with this ordinance be repealed and to extend such conflict. If any section, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional, otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall affect the validity of the remaining ordinance.
And I would like to say, I would like to say, Mr. Weddle, that in the first opening paragraph, it tells you that this is only addressing section five of the, of the Ordinance 2023-10, and it's amending, and on the second page, the part that is marked through is what is currently in that section, and then what's underlined following is, is the only change. That's the only change in that section of your original ordinance.
We understand that, but generally, we take the entire ordinance, go to that section, do the changes we want to amend, and we do the same thing. We highlight that it's amendment, but we keep the entirety of the ordinance. But here's something I'd like to point out to counsel that's kind of a contradictory. You said that this shall consist of five members, but in then, and the Chair's looking for clarification, so my office and the clerk's office will know. And then it says in K that a quorum shall consist of majority. Earlier, Council Lady House had stated that two members was a quorum. Is that what you're saying?
No, I said two members were approved. There were three originally approved, okay?
But you said it was a quorum.
Three was a quorum, but then the other, one of the council members-
But you said this shall make two as, have a quorum.
We're wanting to change this so that two can go ahead and conduct business.
Correct. You're saying that's a quorum.
No, I'm not saying that's a quorum. I'm saying that we want to give two the power to go ahead and perform functions of the ethics board to appoint the other members.
Which, Donna, that, to be clear, then you are saying that is a quorum. When you've already said you have five members, and five- in five members, a quorum would be three.
Correct.
So now you're saying, but this don't even read this way. This is where we get in trouble. And this has been my frustration sitting here tonight is because we do things that are just not right. And this is, the council, this is not right. You cannot...
Clear.
Hold on, councilman. It is my job to execute your guys' ordinances. It's you pass them, then I have to implement them. Well, if my office is not clear on your Attorney Weiss's writings here, you're saying you have five members, then a majority is a quorum. Well, the majority of that board at five would be three. Council Lady made a clear statement earlier that a quorum now is two. So I want to make sure that we are perfectly clear that a quorum is still a three. That's a majority of that board. That's in your amendment.
I would agree that the quorum is three.
Thank you.
Mr. Bryson?
I make a motion that we accept the amended ordinance.
Either way, if we amend it, if we amend it, the Ethics Board ordinance, does it not have to go to the Department of Local Government for acceptance per KRS 65.003, Section 5? So if what the council's doing is illegal, the DLG would see that.
Well, you're talking regarding the ethics. But nobody said what you're doing is illegal. We're looking for clarification from one thing being said.
Well, you said it was wrong, so what does that mean?
Well, it's wrong in what the council lady said and what was on the paper.
Okay. But I'll second the motion.
Then you do your real call.
Mr. Ortega?
This is only for Section 5 of the current ordinance, so yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Now, do you know when we'll hear back from Department of Local Governments?
We'll have to file this.
Okay.
But this is an ordinance, so we'll have to read this again for a second reading.
I just know that it has to be approved by the Department of Local Government per KRS for it to be accepted.
So this was, we're moving on to G, the Amendment to the City Development Planning relating to Qualified Manufactured Homes. This was out of the other agenda or the other packet, the original packet. You have that ordinance. And if the clerk would read...
If I may first, the building inspector is not here. He was going to say a few things. This is an ordinance that I've been working with the mayor's office and Lady Bryson about. I don't know if many of you know that currently you are not allowed to move in a manufactured home into the city limits. If you buy a vacant lot, you can't put a single Y, double Y, whatever you want on there. House Bill 160 takes into effect July of next year, which says as long as you meet these requirements, the age of the manufactured home, the certain dimensions, you are allowed to do that. There's a city resident that purchased a piece of land next to her mother-in-law, and she's getting up there in age, and they want to be close to her. So I reached out to Larry Bryson, and he helped me prepare this ordinance, which will allow her and anyone else to basically not have to wait until July of next year to get this done. Is there any questions about that?
One thing about, that I'd like to say about it is it is going to be passed in Kentucky. I realize that. So anybody that's here that that would concern might want to reach out to your... If you live in a subdivision, a neighborhood, if you have HOA, you might want to reach out and see if things are in place in that subdivision to protect any property from that. Because that's what I'm being told is going to have to happen is it's going to have to be the subdivision or have to recognize in the rules that that can't happen. And you would probably have to organize HOA to be able to fight it.
There was a question for the audience. Why do I want to push this forward before July? I don't want to cause any undue hardship of anyone wanting to become a city resident.
And I agree. But taking care of them, paper, ten out of fifty.
I believe it's going to be law July 1st anyways.
And then somebody changes it.
There's always a maybe. Yeah. But as of right now, it's on the books. House Bill 160, everyone can go look it up. One of the restrictions it has to... The manufactured home has to be no older than five years. So if they put it, if this passes after the second reading, and they want to put a home on there in December, the age of the manufactured home cannot be any older than 2020. Five years.
Anthony, I don't think we can go ahead and do that right now anyway. We're not anywhere ready because this has to go before the zoning and...
Planning and zoning.
And planning and zoning. Instead, we can't do anything until they've done something.
I was under the impression by Mr. Bryson that it was good.
No, once you pass this, it don't have to go there.
Is there currently a functioning Planning and Zoning Commission or Board?
That is correct.
You do? Okay.
Mr. Bryson, in your legal opinion, sir, is this ordinance legal and ready to be read today?
Yes.
Go ahead.
The purpose that Kentucky General Assembly has recognized and affirmed that the protection of property values is a legitimate issue to local governments, and the enactment of regulations designed to protect property values is a proper exercise of local government legislative power. The Kentucky General Assembly has also recognized and affirmed that while local governments have legitimate authority to enact reasonable zoning regulations, the provision of quality, affordable housing through qualified manufactured homes serves as an essential public purpose. The Kentucky General Assembly has done so in amending KRS 100.348 to provide for qualified manufactured homes. However, these amendments are not effective until July 1st, 2026, in order for local governments to modify their own zoning and planning regulations and ordinances. However, it is the intent of the City Council of the City of London that this ordinance become effective immediately upon publication. The reasoning for this early adoption of this is due to the need for more affordable housing in London because of the aging of residential housing units, declining of homeownership, increase in homelessness, increase in rental housing, and lack of new home construction in London. This ordinance provides more affordable housing choices in London. For such reasons, be ordained as follows. Definitions as used in this ordinance unless context requires otherwise. Compatibility standards means standards that have been enacted under KRS 100.348 for the purposes of protecting and preserving the monetary value of real property located within the City of London jurisdiction. Manufactured homes means a single home, residential dwelling constructed after June 15, 1976, in accordance with the National Manufacturing Home Construction and Safety Standards Act of 1974, 42 USC Section 5401, as amended and designed to be used as a single-family residential dwelling with or without permanent foundation when connected to or required utilities and which includes the plumbing, heating, air conditioning, and electrical systems contained therein. Qualified manufactured homes means manufactured homes that meets all the following criteria: is manufactured on the date not to exceed five years prior to the date of installation and has all parts that operate only during transport move, is affixed to a permanent foundation, and is connected to the appropriate facilities and is installed in compliance with KRS 227.570; has a width of at least 20 feet at its smallest width measurement or is two stories in height and oriented at the lot or parcel so that the main entrance faces the door, the door faces the street, and has a minimum total living area of 900 square feet; and permanent foundation means any system of supports that is capable of transferring without failure into soil or bedrock the maximum design load imposed by or upon the structure and complies with KRS 227.570; constructed with materials that are capable of surrounding residential structures so long as the materials do not compromise the structural engineering of the home in conflict with KRS 227.570 and placed at a depth below grade adequate to prevent frost damage in accordance with the manufacturer's installation requirements in KRS 227.570. Compatibility standards are those required of other residential structures in 2018 Kentucky Residential Code and City Ordinance Number 2022-3 Development Ordinance. These are hereby adopted and are to be enforced in the same manner as other zoning regulations and shall be in addition to any zoning regulations that are generally applicable in single-family residence. Any architectural, sorry. Compatibility standards applied to the qualified manufactured home must be equivalent to and not more stringent than those standards applied to other single-family residential structures in the same zone. Other requirements: All qualified manufactured homes shall be foundation skirting, depending on the type of existence and any attached structures approved by either the City of London Building Inspector or the City of London Board of Zoning and Adjustments. Setback, restrictions, lot dimensions, and orientation of the home and the lot so long as they are no stricter than those for site-built homes within the same zone. A manufactured home that does not meet the minimum width of 20 feet or minimum total living area of 900 square feet is need to be considered a qualified manufactured home under subsection 2D of this section may be treated as qualified manufactured home for purposes of subsection 3 and 4 of this section. If the setback requires a lot dimensions would not reasonably accommodate a home meeting those minimum dimensions, the home is the minimum width and square footage that could reasonably fit on the lot while complying with all applicable setback requirements and other zoning regulations, and the home otherwise meets all other requirements of qualified manufactured homes under this section. This section shall not be constructed to effect, modify, or abolish restrictions contained in reported deeds, conveyance, or developer subdivision restrictions. This section shall not be construed as limiting to, in any way, the authority of the City of London to adopt regulations redesigned to protect historic properties or historic districts. Any zoning regulations, ordinance, or as a requirement that violates this section is void and unenforceable. Other parts of the City of London's Long-Term Planning and Development Ordances and other zoning and planning board regulations and zoning and planning board for adjustments regulations, for example, variances, may require changes as suggested by these boards. Any ordinances or part of the ordinances in conflict with this ordinance be or hereby repealed. This ordinance shall become effective immediately upon publication.
I make a motion that at this time we do not pass this ordinance.
Motion to table, then?
Yes.
Yes, that's done.
To what?
We can table that then.
To what meeting?
I would say to, do our due diligence, January.
I do want to say something to the family that is waiting on this. They were hoping to get a first reading done today and possibly a second reading done, maybe at a special call meeting later this month. But hopefully, something done by at least November. They are waiting on this to move to the city.
Well, like what was said before, and I hate it for anybody, but that's one family versus a lot of people that wouldn't want it to go through at this time. So we can't just think about the one person.
That's right.
We need to think about, consider all of London at this time. I don't think we're prepared to move forward. We need to get with our planning and zoning. We need to have some meetings, talk how this is going to affect us more and understand the ordinance better. So I still move to table this until January.
Mr. Bryson, does this need to go to Planning and Zoning?
No.
Okay, so we've got a motion to table till January 2026.
Seconded.
And then a real call.
Mr. Ortega?
No.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
No.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Motion carries. It'd be on the agenda for January 2026. The last thing for, that's concluding the new business on the old business relating to the Amendment Ordinance of 2022-13. Council is announcing that they're working on this. A special call meeting may be called. When they have time, they analyze it more, and they possibly will handle this in December, the 2025 meeting. Is that correct, council?
Yes.
Yes.
That is the pace scale.
Is that the paying compensation?
That is correct. The chair is going to look for some clarifications on something. In the Weist agreement that you guys have done, is council backdating this contract or this engagement with him? Or is it effective today?
You'll have to take that up directly with him. Please. Thank you.
I mean, you should be able to clarify that, Judd.
I probably could, but I'm going to let Mr. Weiss, who is our attorney, do that. That's his job. Thanks.
Okay, then, please hold decorum so we can get these matter of records done.
Mr. Chairman? I believe that's where it says the right effective date.
Okay, so the representation is ongoing effective. This agreement is August the 4th.
That's what it says.
So you're backdating, okay.
At the time, if I could, at the time he was hired, he, it was represented that he would be making the same amount that Conrad had been paid. There was no contract entered into at that time because we were asking questions about that. So you're backdating it for a greater fee to be paid.
So the, the other thing we have is to handle litigation approved by or directed by the city council. When was the motion made to appeal to the appellate court and what public meeting? Can council give us clarification? Or to the Supreme Court?
Supreme Court's agreed to expedite it, but that's all we know so far.
No, I'm saying what public meeting did you approve him to take those to those two courts? Because it says here to handle litigation approved by council in your contract that you're backdating to August the 4th.
I don't think that's specific.
What, what meetings was those two items on the agenda and passed by you guys?
Again, please take that up with Mr. Weest.
Well, Judd, it's just a, it's just a good question. Don't be defensive.
I'm not.
We're looking for clarification. You just threw everybody this on me. I would have done it in an email if you had sent it to me.
Move, please. Mr. Weest said if you had any questions to contact him, he'd be.
Well, Mr. Weest needs to be here at the next meeting, so we all can ask the questions. Next thing that, we have public comments for three minutes.
Are we here from Thursday? Are we here from?
They didn't have that on the agenda, that you took it off.
Did they want to speak?
No, they were just giving you your packet, which they do every month anyway, so we appreciate.
Mr. Smith wanted to, or?
I'd like to ask.
Can you come to the podium?
I can.
So the people at home can hear.
I would like to ask Mr. Bryson what makes him think that he knows more about laws and regulations than somebody that's been on the council for two months and got appointed to that position?
Go ahead, go to the podium.
So I want to bring up ordinance 2025-06 that was rejected by council. My question isn't to understand tonight why it was rejected. My question is to ask that you revisit the subject. Ordinance 2025-06. It is an ordinance that was presented that would hold all elected officials of the city accountable equitably. It is a standard that has been set and adopted by many other cities, and I think it's a precedent that this city should also follow and entertain. That is all.
Thank you. If you don't care to state your name for the record?
David Evans. You know, I know Judd had stated, you know, how much Larry Bryson had made this year, but nothing was stated as to, you know, how much he has done and whatnot, and it wasn't about what he had done or how he's done for the city. It was about what he's made. So to me, that sounded like jealousy. So I'd sell the weenie hut, open a law firm, and hire Donna because she knows more than he does anyways.
Leah?
Guarantee you, get more for your money.
Mr. Mayor, are these supposed to be about?
Well, once you pass that ordinance, it is not even usable.
Okay.
Let's go to the, if you don't care, come to the podium.
Leanne Howard. Okay, here the citizens are again, being held hostage by city council. We've lost countless of opportunities for forward progression in London because of tabling issues or refusal to work with the mayor. We, the taxpayers, are out thousands of dollars and thousands more to come by hiring the ridiculously priced attorneys and their false promises of judgments that they know city council begs to hear but won't receive. Examples of lost funding for the city, so spending all this money on attorney fees, community services, you know, your veterans parade you just had, your Martin Luther King event, your music series you have, the parks, our veterans park, Levi Jackson Park, sanitation, water sewer, it's nice that London isn't underwater anymore, that our sewer's been fixed, road maintenance, the fire department, and all your equipment. Money is being taken away from these services for their attorney fees that are useless, have not served any purpose whatsoever. Does anybody care that all of this is being neglected for their ridiculous fees? Not talking about you, Conrad. Mr. Weest, we don't like you, we don't appreciate you, and if city council represents us, then you're representing us and we don't want you. Since city council refuses to address the domestic violence and racism issue, I have a plea for the community. In a show of solidarity, because we know the nation is watching and surrounding communities are watching, I would hope that these organizations and any and others not mentioned would please post a public statement claiming not to contone domestic violence or racism of any kind. People need to know that the city and county are not racist. We want them to come to Laurel County, and they're afraid to. Let's show this outside community that we're a great city to visit, to vacation in, to eat. Here's some of the people that I wish would post a public statement, the mayor's office, city hall, the fire department, EMS, the London Laurel County Chamber of Commerce, London downtown, Laurel County Economic Development Council. David Westerfield, you come to them Martin Luther King event every year and give a wonderful prayer and speech. It would be nice if these communities and these organizations that try to get businesses to come in and tourists to come to London, if you'd let them know they're welcome. Don't let them be afraid.
Your time has, Leah, your time has expired.
Three minutes are up?
Yeah.
That fast? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd say any candidates running for office too, if you would say that you're against racism and domestic violence would be great.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I am definitely against racism and violence. I will say that clearly. Some of my very best friends in this world are of color, and I have never had an issue with that.
Excuse me?
Okay.
Excuse me? Excuse me, I didn't hear you. I can't hear you.
Let me come up to you there, brother.
Yeah.
I've known you my whole life. Lost him, known you my whole life, Jesse. We stood on the corner during the campaign elections. You shook my head, told me if there's anything you need, I'll let you know. I've not heard from you once since you said that awful word. My cousin here hasn't heard from you once. I've not heard from you either, though. You know the words that you said, but yet you say you respect me, you've known me my whole life, and you love me.
And your father. He was a dear friend of mine.
And he's rolling over, remember too? And everybody knows my dad's.
What about that?
He's rolling over in his grave right now after what you just said.
Excuse me?
After what you just said, I knew your father loved you.
Very well.
And I come out and heard from you, Judd.
Why haven't I heard from you? I don't see you, Chase. Am I, am I, am I supposed to chase you down? No.
You don't have to chase me down. It's easy, a synonym.
Listen, you all, you all can point fingers at all you want. You can point fingers at us all you want individually. That's not fair. That's, that is not fair.
Leah, Leah.
Talking about myself, Leanne, I am no racist.
If council will keep the forum too.
Your dad knew where I stood, Chase.
Mayor, where's?
And motion to adjourn.
I'm not a racist person, and I'm not, I'm not for violence.
Okay.
Did you hear that? Okay.
Ma'am?
And you know me better.
Ma'am, I do have one last thing to say before we adjourn. Thanksgiving is coming up, trash is on a Thursday. Please be aware if your trash pickup day is that Thursday, it'll be the following day, the Friday.
Everything that was written today, is that going to be posted on the city website? I know it's more work on you, ma'am.
It shouldn't be, yes.
I'll post everything, so no open records.
So we, as we close before we adjourn, okay.
I'm Grace Gilbert. I do not live in the city. I have a business in the city, and I've lived in London Laurel County my whole life. About 40 years, not really. But anyway, this council and mayor, I know some of you, some of you I don't know. I know the mayor from seeing what he's done and how he's been with this town and the people. I know Mr. Bryson. This has got to stop. We have a beautiful city. We have, the tourism commission, we have spent money that they've brought in and done so much, and if somebody drives down the street, they notice it. But then again, we turn around and get on Facebook, or, and people share the meetings, share the controversy, share what all went on with Mr. Whittle, Mayor Whittle. I'm not a genius, but I got common sense. I read and watched that hearing, and I'm sorry, council, that was a farce. That was a personal vendetta against a man that a few of you didn't like, and then you pulled in other people to go along with it. Now, if there'd been anything, I mean, it would have come out, wouldn't it? Wouldn't it have come out if there'd have been anything against him? Everybody makes mistakes. I've listened and watched people belittle Mr. Bryson. He's got more experience on a city council than every one of you people do, and every one of us. But you treat him, don't smile because you treat him with about this much respect. I know everybody. It's crazy. So we've got to stop and pull together and make our town as great as it is, because if I was a person that wanted to move into a small town and raise my children and be a part of this community, uh-uh. I mean, just like with the racist comments, we need more diversity. And who wants to welcome them in here? And know, and know that someone on the city, yes, it was said in private, but you don't go to court and play it. Geez, old Pete.
Excuse me, that, that's a, that's a personal matter, and that is going.
That's exactly. You should have left it personal.
Well, listen, that is going through the court process, so I can't speak on that, but it's going through the court process.
But I'm just saying, if somebody heard it, who would want to come to this town? We're running them away, people. So it ain't going to matter what we do, what you do, or what goes on in this town. They're being run away. An embarrassment.
Thank you.
Does this come off?
I'm Barb Reed, as you all may know. I have a question for each of you, and I'll start with you, Mr. Weaver. Do you, are you going to work with this mayor?
What do you mean, am I going to work with him?
Are you going to work and act civil with this mayor?
I'm working hard for the taxpayers.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'm working very hard for the taxpayers.
No, you're not.
Oh, well, that's your opinion, Barb.
Are you going to work with this mayor?
I'm working for London and always have.
Are you going to work with this mayor?
And we will not turn a blind eye, okay? You need to understand that, Barb. No, we did not.
Am I child?
Never.
Am I child? And as far as you saying you're not racist?
I'm not racist.
That's what most people say, but you never see them invite any of you to their house to eat. Are you going to work with the mayor, ma'am?
This is not question and answer time for you.
I'm sorry?
Sorry, it's not question and answer time, it's public comments. Clock's ticking.
You are so rude.
Sorry, Barb.
Are you going to work with the mayor?
I'm working for the citizens, and if the mayor's along with that, I'm working for him.
The mayor is along with that.
Ask the citizens.
Are you going to work with the mayor?
I believe by the ordinance I had drafted, that proves it.
You're not?
Did you not read, did you not hear the ordinance? I tried to get past.
No, I can't. I'm hard of hearing, sorry.
He asked him to resign.
I asked, I asked an ordinance to get passed. Mr. Bryson drafted it up. Is that not cooperation?
Who'd he ask to resign?
He asked the mayor to resign.
Who did?
He asked the mayor.
Ask them, are they against you now, son?
Is that a question or is that a statement?
That's a question.
Are they against me?
Yeah.
Well, we're six individuals up here.
Awesome. You sit there and you make fun of the citizens, make faces on your phone, and this, whoever this is right here, she does the same thing. Do you all think that's really right to sit up here and do this?
You think it's right to be rude, as you have been to all of us, the entire council?
You talking about rude?
You've been very rude, Barb.
You talking about rude?
And out of order.
I'm sorry?
And nothing has been done about it. You've been allowed to do it, so I understand.
Oh, well, please take me out. I'd like to see that on front of the Senate. Also, I would like to remind you all, I went to a women's conference several years ago about leadership and business. We were given this card, and I would like to tell it to you. You are the guide on the side, city council, not the sage on the stage.
Thank you.
By the way, cuff me, let me go to jail. You know, we senior citizens have a tough time anyway. I'd get free healthcare, free food, not have to worry about a dang thing.
Barb, I would like to answer one, by one thing, and I'm not being a smart aleck. When I say it, I'm not. I feel like that as a city council member, we are called, and this is talked about in the Word and the Bible, being a gatekeeper. It's for us to be a gatekeeper. I have tried my best, I have tried my best to watch for things that entered London, things that was wrong, things I couldn't get a straight answer from, and I have always tried to decide my vote by that, and tried to be honest. And I know, I can sit here honestly today and tell you all, and you can boo me down, you can get up, laugh, whatever. I don't take back one vote, nothing that I've done in my term as mayor. I mean, mayor, sorry. No, I wanted to be mayor one day. No, I don't. See, I can joke about that. I wanted to be mayor. My dad was mayor.
Is there anyone else that can speak here?
I think we've got one guy that speaks every time.
Sir, 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 did you want to speak?
But anyway, I just want to, I want to set the record straight by saying that. I try and vote honest, and so.
Do you know what people, and I'm saying your thing, you know what, do you know what people that stand up for the community are called? Enbreters.
Do you know I don't get on Facebook and call anybody anything?
Guys, we have one more speaker, please.
Oh, no, I ain't getting in between that.
Okay, we've got another gentleman wanting to speak. Time has started now. Can you say your name for the record?
I have two questions. How much money just?
Can you state your name for the record?
Well, you never so. I just want to ask how much money went to connect the internet service place for the broadband? And two, what was the new policy for the 911 station that you submitted, then retired after they approved it? Why the change?
I'm sorry.
Why did you change the policy on getting public notice, public forum, stuff like that with the 911 station? Why change it? You got it approved and then retired.
Yeah.
Why?
They were, they want to know the truth.
I, I want to know what changed because I can't find it, you know?
Okay.
With the new law that you put into player policy?
Yeah.
As a citizen, can't go get that public information because you changed it. Why?
Well, it was a part of the personnel policy. The only, there were not substantial changes, but.
But there was changes.
There were some changes. I think they passed it, I'm not sure.
Yeah, because they congratulated you on retiring after they approved it without even reading it.
Yeah. Part of the reason that I retired, frankly, this is the gospel, is there were too many council people that were coming and swaying the vote that were opposing the.
Public record request, right?
No, no.
Then why was it listed as a policy change in public record request?
Could I answer your question?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. There was a move to place, and there still is, a representative from the ambulance service on the board, and I think that's probably, well, I think it's already happened, hasn't it?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think so.
I forbid it coming out.
And, you know, there were some council people who were protecting, I thought, the ambulance service more than they were the fire department.
I agree.
And I think I had a conflict there. So I resigned from representing 911. There's no animosity between me and the 911 board.
Yeah.
They do a great service. But when I see politics begin to enter into an organization like 911, I don't want to have anything to do with it. Because the fire department with this certificate of need, and now they've hired the same attorney who was opposing the city, the certificate of need, they've hired the same attorney now as their attorney. We, we went through a hearing, a long hearing about that. We didn't even have to present any evidence. The hearing officer, who was unbiased and independent person, ruled for the city. There's a need for those services.
But why change the policy on, for me as a person going up and getting information acted?
Oh, there was no change that way.
But that's what the agenda said.
No, no, I don't know what the agenda said, but I wrote, I wrote that part of the policy so I know what it said.
So what, what was changed?
And I suggest you going to the dispatch board meeting and asking them to get a better answer on that.
Oh, I'm going to. I definitely am.
And the, the first question you had about the kinetics, nobody here is really going to be aware of that.
So city money's being spent on this, and you don't know about it?
The city spent no funds for the internet to come through the city limits of London.
So 911 is no part of the city, correct?
We do give funding to that, correct. We co-share with the county.
So you don't pay attention where the funding's going?
Once we release.
Like you just write them a blank check and they do whatever?
Well, no, again, you're.
To the board meetings, when they pay the bills, they state all the bills there.
They do, they list it out.
All the questions.
It's very transparent there as well. They do a very good job. The chairman does a very good job running that board, and I'm sure if you go up there during that board meeting, as Larry stated, the council members have done, you'll get the answers, but the council's not going to have the questions that you're seeking for here tonight.
Okay.
Okay?
So I'm just curious why.
And your time has expired as well.
That's fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, just need a motion to adjourn.
Does anyone else want to, anyone else speak?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Are we still doing the ceremony?
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
For those of you that would like to stay around after the meeting, we have Medal of Valors to give out to some of our men here in the city for an act that took place. We'd love for you to stay and join us in celebrating and acknowledging what courageous people we have working in the city limits.
What's that? Yep. Now, what now? Uh, no, I don't. I'm not sure.
First, I'd like to welcome everybody to... I'll make sure that everybody can hear me. First, I wanna thank everybody for, of course, being attendance, but you came for the council meeting. We wanted to do this because this is an important, that through hard and tribulation, that we recognize when people do extraordinary things. So, we first wanna thank you all for being here for the special occasion. We're gathered here for one of the most important duties of this city, to formally recognize and honor the extraordinary heroism that these men before you today on an event that took place within this city. It's been a privilege to celebrate internally what the acts of these nine individuals did in the city. On the morning of October the first, 2025, at 8:48, 911 Communication Center received a call reporting a structure fire. But this was not a routine call. This dispatcher was told that a resident, a blind double amputee, was trapped inside a burning home and could not escape. When a London fire and police personnel arrived on scene, they faced a nightmare, a structure filled with smoke, with flames spreading rapidly throughout the home. With full acknowledgement of danger and without hesitation, these nine first responders entered the residence. I could not be prouder. They located the victim in the bedroom, where the flames were engulfed around the bed of this individual, placing themselves in direct harm. This team worked as one unit, one team, Team London. They carried this resident from the burning bed through a smoke-filled home out to safety. Their actions, their courage, their resourcefulness, their selflessness saved a life that day. Today, it shows you what men and women we have working in this city. The Medal of Valor is one of the highest awards as a mayor that I can bestow upon these nine individuals. And so, you'll have a greater understanding when acts like this happen. We've given it out one other time since I've been mayor. We put together a panel made up of first responders and they take a vote to see if this is deemed the Medal of Valor. The board, the commission most recently that we convened, they deemed it, they sent their recommendation to me, and they said, yes, these nine individuals are heroes and they should've been awarded the Medal of Valor. As mayor, I stand here proud before you because these nine, they would even tell you, this is a small portion of what you've got working in your city. Your first responders to your street department, they all love this city and they do it with pride and honor. And that if any of you were sick or needed them, they would come running. And they wouldn't think of themselves, they would only think about you. And that's all we do as a city. Every day, we think about the citizens. I would like for Public Works, Philip Rawlings, to come up to say a word.
Good evening to each of you. First of all, I just wanna say, on the day of this incident, I was actually present at the PD. I go there oftentimes to see if they need anything, follow up, and what have you. And this particular morning, within minutes when I walked in, the call went out through dispatch. And I myself, along with several of the members of the departments, responded. I went to assist in any way I could. I'm not a rescue person, but I went to assist them any way I could, whether it be blocking traffic or what have you. Upon arrival, I observed these men entering the structure without hesitation, and I was greatly impressed with their courage and their professionalism. What stood out most to me was witnessing their training via each and every department has different training, but I witnessed each of them enacting their training firsthand. They went in to this house and executed flawlessly under extreme conditions. This was the first time that I had ever personally observed such a heroic act up close. It left a lasting impression upon me, and I hold the utmost respect for each of these individuals who risked their lives to save another. And it's for that reason that I proudly nominated them for this honor.
I would like to highlight, if you ever get to see the body cam footage, it's pretty amazing. And then to watch Brandon Wagers, you'll see the two types of trainings that firefighters and police have. The police department spread out, Brandon read to the smoke with police department with him. It shows you the training these guys have and it shows you the passion they have. And we're just glad that you guys could join us, everybody, to witness the highest honor of the City of London being bestowed upon these nine.
The first person we'd like to present this Medal of Valor award to is Chief Bobby Day of the London Police Department.
Next, we would like to present this Medal of Valor award to Battalion Chief Brandon Wagers of the London Fire Department.
Captain Ryan Jackson of the London Police Department.
Lieutenant Drew Jackson of the London Police Department.
Lieutenant Troy Truitt of the London Police Department.
Sergeant Ryan Jackson, London Police Department.
Sergeant John Inman, London Police Department.
Officer Hobie Doggery, London Police Department.
Officer Eric Wilkerson, London Police Department.
So, when people say, what kind of departments do you have working in the city limits of London? Just know this. When the call goes out, they don't care what you voted for, who you voted for, who you support, who you don't support. They don't ask those questions. They come running. I'd like to thank you, men, for everything you do for this city. This is truly an honor to bestow on just such an amazing team. But this truly is every man and woman that works in this city. We thank you, guys, for attending this. Give them a big hug, shake their hand on your way out. Thank you.